I'm going to call the Willits City Council regular meeting to order this February 28th at 6:31, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Vice Mayor will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Real call, please. Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Strong.
Mayor Stransky.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Present.
Mayor Runn.
Present.
All right, before we get started this evening, I would just like just to take a moment of silence, and I'd like to read this statement, if you'll all just take a moment with me. The city of Willits is deeply saddened by the passing of Edith Cecarelli. Despite our sadness, the community was truly honored to have the recent opportunity to celebrate her 116th birthday with the world. Edith was an inspiration for the community as she experienced the growth of Willits and was eager to share her experiences with everyone. Her stories made every one of us proud to call this beautiful northern California home, community home. These stories not only reflected historical changes, but also the life and times of an amazing woman. Edith will always be remembered by all. And then, do you want to take this opportunity, is there anything that you want to announce to the community about any upcoming services or rosary? You're welcome to.
If you want the public to hear, if you stand up there, that might help.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to acknowledge you. Thanks for acknowledging. Edie was my cousin, second cousin, and how I'm related is I'm her mother and my grandmother were sisters, so she was my dad's first cousin. We are second, Lee and I are the second cousins. And of course, we miss, are going to miss her, but she went quietly and she went the way you want to go. So after your vitals were, she was at the doctor's office the week before and she was, all her vitals were great. So anyway, the service will be on the 16th of March. St. Anthony's at 2:00. Rosary will be the night before the 15th at 5:30. And then the reception will be out at the Senior Center. They've authored it, so.
Thank you.
Over at the location. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you, and our condolences.
Yes, thank you.
Our next order of business is public communication. The city council welcomes input from the audience. If there is a matter of business on the agenda that you're interested in, you may address the council when this matter is considered. If you wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. The Brown Act regulations do not allow for action to be taken on audience comments in which the subject is not listed on the agenda. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. While the city council welcomes public criticism of policies, procedures, programs, or services of the agency, behavior that disrupts, disturbs, impedes, or renders infeasible the orderly conduct of the meeting, and that includes but is not limited to the use of profanity, slurs, yelling from the audience, threatening remarks, physically threatening conduct or physical or verbal displays of disrespect, will not be tolerated and the individuals will be removed. Let's hope we don't have that tonight. All right. With that, I'll open up public communication. If you'd like to speak, we appreciate it if you would state your name and step up to the podium. Do we have anybody from the audience that wants to address us? All right. Okay, hearing done. We'll move on to public matters. Our first presenter is Felicia Smith, the Senior Program Manager from Sonoma Clean Power. And I believe she has a presentation for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Felicia Smith. I am a Senior Program Manager with Sonoma Clean Power. Really appreciate the opportunity to present tonight. I have two objectives. One, I'm hoping I can debunk some confusion around energy bills, and two, share some bill assistance programs that could be really beneficial for people that are struggling with high rates. This is a tall order. I realize that I am standing in front of the East Commercial Street corridor while I appreciate there's a lot of people here tonight. I know it's for the next item, so I'm going to do my best to meet these objectives in about 15 minutes. Specifically what prompted this is in every year in January, we get phone calls into our organization regarding high bills, and it's particularly related to heating costs. However, this January in particular, it was conflated with PG&E electricity rate increases. And specifically, we had a little bit of a rash of opt-outs from Willits residents in particular, and I kind of want to explain why we were struggling with that. So ultimately, I want to make elected officials and residents aware and make sure you have more accurate information so you can help answer questions, tamp down some confusion, and make sure that you know of a couple of key programs that could be really beneficial to our neighbors and community members. So very quickly, I'm going to do a basic Sonoma Clean Power 101. We're going to look at bills specifically, and then I'm going to talk about some programs. So wish me luck, 15 minutes. Oh, this guy. Okay. Sonoma Clean Power, who are we? We are the Community Choice Aggregator, which means we are the electricity provider and generator for Mendocino County. Specifically, we are a public agency with a board of directors, including Councilmember Strong as a decision maker on our board. And because we are a public agency, our, we are funded through rate revenue, not tax dollars, and I know that's not necessarily intuitive, but a common misconception, and just wanted to clarify that we are not funded through local or state tax dollars. So how electricity works, the wild world of electrons certainly starts with a generation site. In the case of Sonoma Clean Power, we provide the generation, and then those electrons are moved through the delivery system, which is transmission and distribution. So the way it's structured as an SCP customer, we generate the electricity and then PG&E delivers it to your home. And so ultimately, on the bill, there are two main components. The first is generation, the second is delivery. We're always paying for those two components. Our service territory, we recognize this map. We started service in Sonoma County in 2014, and we're so delighted to have Mendocino County join us in 2017. So we service all residents in Mendocino County with the exception of the city of Ukiah, who has its own unique electric setup. And while SCP's total opt-in rate is 86%, it's about 78.5% here in Willits. We have a higher opt-out rate than we do in the rest of our service territory. I just wanted to highlight a couple of key attributes of Sonoma Clean Power. The first and foremost, our claim to fame is we're providing low-carbon electricity. And while I understand that may not necessarily be important to everyone, I think something else we do really well is respond to local needs. So for instance, in calendar year 2020, the Brook Trails area was experiencing the Oak Fire, and SCP worked really hard to make sure that those customers were protected from a bill standpoint, so ensuring they didn't have late payment fees or utility disconnects. So really like keeping a pulse of what's going on in our service territory and trying to respond accordingly. And then the last bullet says provide competitive rates, and this is probably the most important and should probably be the first bullet. We have intentionally set our SCP rates to ensure that SCP customers' total electricity bill is anywhere from 5% to 7% lower than PG&E's. And I highlight this because when we were getting phone calls in January about concerns about high bills and customers were opting out, they were inadvertently increasing their bills. And as much as we tried to explain, like, this probably isn't wise if your understandable concern is high rates, it would be helpful if everyone understood how the bills work and the fact that Sonoma Clean Power has committed for calendar year 2024 and 2025 to have reduced rates in and around 5% to 7% for our customers, so we can retain those. And the goal isn't, this isn't personally motivated of like, we have to keep every SCP customer. This is simply, if cost is a concern, staying with Sonoma Clean Power is a better cost-effective Just really quick, where does our electricity come from? We have large hydro, wind power, solar, geothermal, we've got like a little bit of nuclear, and some biomass. So overwhelmingly, our electricity is about 91% carbon-free, so very low carbon content. The remaining 9% is unspecified and likely has carbon intensity to it. Okay. Let's talk about bills. And I love looking at bills, and I would encourage everyone, after we look at an example, to go home and look at them. It is pretty fascinating. Page one, you get three key pieces of information. Looking at the second highlighted item is electricity delivery charges, electricity generation charges, so that's your total electric bill, and that third line item that isn't highlighted is your gas charge. And so whenever I'm looking at my bill, the first thing I'm assessing is like, what is the percentage breakdown between gas and electric, so I can determine like what my total energy use is. I think it's pretty obvious to say, in the wintertime, our gas usage is much higher. So all those phone calls we were getting in January is about heating your home. Heating and air conditioning are the largest energy uses and comprises a lion's share of our bills. Okay. And then, if you're an SCP customer, at the very bottom, and I did a little snippet, PG&E reminds us that there is always a delivery and generation charge, and effectively saying the Sonoma Clean Power charge is not duplicative. So it is expressly stated, but it can be really confusing. It looks like it's an added charge. Okay. So we're an SCP customer, we got our bill, and we want to figure out like, how do we compare these costs? So when you look at the PG&E delivery charge page, that first, do I have a little? Here we go. This first line that's highlighted, you actually see a generation credit. PG&E says, "We were going to charge you $72.10, but you're not our generation customer, so we're going to give that money back to you." And then they add on two little fees, what we call the PCIA charge and the franchise fee, and those are fees to CCA, to Community Choice Aggregator customers, in this instance, PG&E. Okay. So they charge us, they credited us 72, but they charge us for these two additional fees. So then we go on to our Sonoma Clean Power bill. And we have a total of $68.88. And this is a unique bill because this person opted for Evergreen, which is our premium. They were saying, "I'm willing to pay more for carbon-free electricity." And they also participate in our grid savvy program, so added programs as being an SCP customer. So when you kind of strip all of this away and you want to do a basic analysis, you say, okay, PG&E was going to charge me $72.10, but SCP instead charged me $61.10, the PCIA charge, which is like kind of a CCA charge, and the franchise fee. And that is how you actually compare SCP's rates versus PG&E. In this example, from calendar year 2022, this is cost neutral. And I looked at this PowerPoint this morning, and I was like, 37 cents, that is a really terrible example. But our rates went into effect January 1st, so you will first see your usage and your bills for January this February, and so you'll see a more, when you go home and do this exercise, you will see a bigger difference between SCP and PG&E. Okay. Thank you for bearing with me on that. It only takes five minutes, and even if like you have kids, this is a good arithmetic activity. I highly recommend that you do this, and you can go back to previous years. What is really challenging is if you opted out of Sonoma Clean Power and you are a PG&E customer for both generation and delivery, it is all one line item. So I completely understand why some people called in and said, "This feels like an extra charge. I want to opt out," because all of those costs are baked into a single line item. And so what happens is utilities every year publish a super transparent report, and it's called something like Wonky, the Joint Rate Mailer. It's an annual report that gives a breakdown between PG&E and the CCAs. This in particular is Sonoma Clean Power. And so you can see line by line what the cost differences are for each service that's baked into those rates. I know that this is an incredible amount of work to try and make an informed decision between staying with Sonoma Clean Power and/or opting out and staying with PG&E, but we are committed to 5% to 7% lower. So if you're hearing like anything from your neighbors or your family members of like, "I don't understand this," certainly have them call us, but you can say with confidence they do intentionally have lower rates, and you can also thank your councilmember for weighing in on that and making that decision. Okay. So we know that bills are pretty high. We have a general sense of how we compare these rates. How do we start to reduce total cost? What is not included in this presentation is energy use. How much electricity are we using? How much natural gas and therms are we using? I'm intentionally leaving that out based on time, but if you ever want to talk about it, I could talk you right off. Income-qualified bill assistance, there are quite a few programs, and so I'm trying to bucket this between sustained discounts, one-time bill assistance, and direct install programs in which people will come into your home for free and make upgrades to help you realize long-term bill savings. So I'm going to give a quick little snapshot of what's going on. Okay. There are five different programs that are listed out on this slide. The first is through a California program called CARE. Everything you're looking at right now is income-qualified, but if you meet the income eligibility for CARE, you can save up to 20% or more on both electricity delivery and gas charges. There's also the federal FARA program, which offers an 18% discount. And one that is not necessarily income-restricted is medical baseline. So there is an electricity discount for those that are medically dependent on electricity. And so all of this information is available on Sonoma Clean Power's website, PG&E. I'd really encourage like, look at what the income qualifications are or the medical baseline qualifications to see if you potentially qualify. And those are sustained discounts. There is also income-qualified support for bill assistance, particularly people that are facing disconnection or have outstanding balances. The first is a federal program called LIHEAP, and it's pretty cool. The program administrator is actually based out of Ukiah. It's called North Coast Energy Services. And so they are local here in our backyard. It is up to $1,000 for a one-time payment. And then PG&E also, or a statewide program also offers AMP, which is up to 500. So if someone is really, really struggling with a really big balance, this could be really worthwhile. Again, all income-qualified. Okay. So you've got your sustained discounts, your like emergency option if you meet the qualifications. There's also two programs that I want to highlight, I keep hitting the wrong button, that really starts to tackle energy efficiency. How do we just use less electricity in our home without impacting our quality of life? LIHEAP offers this. So they have two services. The first is that one-time bill assistance that can be really beneficial to people. And the second is home energy upgrades. So they will send an inspector, both speaking English or Spanish, to somebody's home that meets the income qualifications, and kind of look around your house to say, "Your water heater's busted. You have single-pane windows. You don't have enough attic insulation." They will figure out, based on their federal funding requirements, what you are eligible for, and they will come in and they will blitz your house in one to two days and install all of this. And this is where you start to see that like long-term savings of like attic insulation means that your heater is running less frequently, therefore it's costing you less. So I would really encourage, one cool thing about LIHEAP is you, when you submit the application, you're actually applying for the one-time bill assistance as well as the home energy upgrades. So this is an awesome program, entirely and completely free if you meet the income requirements, which I'll show in a second. I'm so close, by the way, so close to the end. Okay. The second one, which is very comparable, but slightly less service offerings, is PG&E's Energy Savings Assistance. It's the same concept. Someone will come to your house, do an audit, they're not poking around for permits. Oh, God, I'm saying that to the city officials? Maybe they are, I don't know. They're really just looking at a specific punch list to say like, "Do you have enough insulation? Do you have like leaky doors? Is there some caulking that we can do?" You complete the application online or over the phone, and they've tried to make it really, really simple, so that while there is an income requirement, they are not requiring income documentation, which makes the application a lot easier to complete. Single-family home, multifamily, the home has to be at least five years old. Anything newer is probably a pretty efficient home. So I want to show you the breakdown of like how you should be thinking about like, "Am I eligible for this?" Or like, "How would I decide between the two?" Okay. The first column, we have the LIHEAP program, which is federally funded. They support single-family, multifamily, renter or owner. Always in the case with a renter, it does need authorization from the landlord because they're potentially making improvements to, they are making improvements to the house. And so that's a certain aspect of that. LIHEAP does building envelope, and what I specifically mean about that is they will replace damaged windows and inefficient windows, primarily single-pane. And then they're doing the weatherization, which is attic insulation, wall insulation, air sealing, and appliance repair and replacement. Generally, they're looking for things that are no longer like inoperative, but I think they might have some wiggle room there. Okay. The last part is the most important, which I just pulled. Annual income for a four-person household is $66,000 or less. So they're really using the AMI area median income to determine these amounts. Okay. So then you say, well, like, I don't really qualify for that. And so then we jump over to the Energy Savings Assistance. That's the PG&E version, slightly lighter than LIHEAP, offering a lot of the same things with the exception of the windows, and they bump up to $75,000 gross or less. And then by comparison, just because I pulled together the chart, we have the CARE discount, which is $60,000 or less, and that's that ongoing PG&E or California discount on electricity and gas. I think I'm done. Hold on. Yeah, I'm done. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions. I will just say just the caveat, I'm not necessarily a rate expert, so if we get into like nitty-gritty and we want to talk PCIA, I'm going to take a really good note and get back to you on it.
So as a Sonoma Clean Power customer, you just laid out those three discount programs.
Yeah.
Can they call Sonoma Clean Power and get started with all three of them, or are some only available to PG&E customers?
They are all available to Sonoma Clean Power customers. Energy Savings Assistance and CARE is a direct PG&E application, and the federal program is North Coast Energy Services. You apply directly online with them, and you do have income documentation, but available to all SCP customers. There's just different pathways. Unfortunately, with programs, it can't always be like centralized as much as I would like it to be.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I saw a presentation online from Sonoma Clean Power that talked about if you opt out and then decide, "Oh, I've made a big mistake," is it a year you have to wait? And is it a year from when you opted out, or is there a grace period time of the year that you?
That is correct. It is one year from your opt-out date, and so that's why it was particularly heart-wrenching for our customer service department of like trying so hard to retain these customers for their benefit, knowing that they'll have to wait one year before they can come back and start to realize some of that instant savings. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. It's a one-year blackout, opt-out blackout phase. They don't call it that.
Because there's some people opt out, they want to opt in and realize they made a mistake, and I think they need to publicize about that, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment.
Yeah.
Great, thank you so much. You missed a lot of information into a short period, and you've.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. That was over time. I'm so sorry, everyone.
I'm just going to see.
I just wanted to mention two things. One is that any of those discount programs include, the discount includes both PG&E and Sonoma Clean Power portions of your bill?
The CARE discount is just on delivery and gas, not the generation rates. But when you, when you go home and you look at your bills, because you know how to do it now, you're going to notice that the delivery charges are much higher than the generation. It takes more infrastructure and more maintenance to get the power to you than it does to produce it.
And the other thing, a comment I wanted to make is that the Sonoma Clean Power Board is very dedicated to not using nuclear power, and the reason there's this little tiny sliver there is because we're forced to pay back some of PG&E's costs for their nuclear power. We don't want to, but we're forced to because of coal. So we actually do not generate any power.
Thank you for saying that.
And then I'm going to open it up to the public and see if anybody has a question about your presentation. Any questions?
They're excited for their homework. I can tell.
All right. Well, I want to thank you. And is it possible to get a copy of your slideshow?
Yes. We have it, and maybe we can include it in the.
Will you forward?
Yeah.
Is there anybody else on the board that?
No, I did receive it in the packet, but I would love to have that available if any members of the public would like to see it.
I'll see about getting it posted on the website.
Yeah. I would like an electronic copy.
There is a slight difference in what you presented tonight to what was in the packet, so we would like your copy.
Yes.
I'm looking for those slides to be able to share.
Yeah, because it went by really fast, but.
Thank you.
So much information.
I could go on forever. You don't want me to.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Monthly update from Little Lake Fire District. I don't see anybody here from the fire department, but there is a written report within the packet. And so I'll move on to the Mendocino County Third District Supervisor, John Hascheck, has a report for us. Welcome, John.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the museum. You know, there's been a lot of talk about it around lately, a lot of work going on. And so really, it's, the big question is, why? Why are we doing this? And why are we trying to shift to a nonprofit or some other public entity that could take over the museum? Turns out that, you know, with the county running, that there's real limitations about what we can do. You know, the store, we can't sell anything for any kind of profit, even though it's, you know, there's these ridiculous rules that we're following as far as, as far as the maintenance of the building and the, like, the insurance that we're paying, the same insurance rate that the sheriff's department pays for their square footage, and so we're paying about $50,000 a year in insurance. And the studies show that if we went to a nonprofit, we could have that insurance for the building for $15,000. So there's some efficiencies and such, but really, the idea is we think it will serve the community better with greater capacity if we go to this other model, and there will be some more operational flexibility, and it's a sustainable way we're looking at. You know, before, we've had the county budget determining, oh, is it going to be cut or not? We want to get away from that, but we do want to maintain, you know, I think there's a realization of the Board of Supervisors that there's a need to maintain funding for the museum, that whatever, well, in a talk with Karen Madsen this afternoon, that, you know, we're looking. know, we're looking at the Friends of the Museum taking over, you know, being the transitional body and really running the museum. And so there's a lot of steps that will have to happen before that can actually take place, but it could be like a year, even two-year process to make it happen. But the Friends of the Museum, I guess, are now thinking that that's a good idea. They're the ones who, who could step forward and take it on. Okay? So if they're, oh, and, you know, there's going to be an expert on this transition. Kern County, where Bakersfield is, did the same thing, that the county ran the museum, and then they decided to get out of it and have it as a nonprofit. And so Kern County switched over where the, the county still has the, all the artifacts from the, in the museum, because that's their responsibility, just like it would continue to be our responsibility. But this nonprofit runs the, runs the museum. And so this person, Mike McCoy, is coming up from Kern County, and he's going to have a community meeting on March 13th, which is Wednesday, I think, and it's from four to six. It's going to be at the Mendocino County Museum. There's going to be from four to five, you know, like a mingle and mosey in the museum, and then from five to six, really question and answer from the community to this guy. And also Supervisor Jordy and I will be there representing the county. And so it's just to make sure that all the questions are being asked from the, it's an opportunity for the community to get to know more. All right? Any questions about that?
I think I'm just, I'm just clarifying that my understanding is correct. So the, the way that the county would continue to support the museum would be ensuring that the artifacts are cared for, the artifacts themselves would be cared for? Is it the expectation that the operations, the payroll, the insurance, the cleaning, all of that would be funded out of, out of the Friends of the Museum? Is that, is that the vision?
Well, the vision, the way I see it, is that the county is still going to have to contribute to the functioning of the museum, but that there'll be other ways that the nonprofit could kind of take in funds, you know, the Friends of the Museum, and then the bookstore, you know, selling things, doing fundraisers, and so they could supplement that. And so the, the salaries and everything, the insurance would be paid out of that joint, you know, contribution of funds.
Well, I was just thinking that a few years ago, for example, I think the county was contributing, I think it was a little shy of 500,000, it was 400 and something. I'm curious if the model going forward be, forward would be one that say the county is hoping that by this change, one, the museum will have more opportunity for improvement and use, and two, that the county would maybe potentially save 200,000 a year or something? Is that, is that part of the goal?
Exactly. Right?
And do you have?
And I think your numbers are pretty much right on.
Okay. All right.
And John, I, I think sort of what I get, what you're saying is that ultimately the county still retains ownership or, or responsibility, so in the event that the nonprofit group failed at its mission, you're, you're there to be that umbrella to, to basically catch it if something happens, is that?
Yeah, I think that would have to be part of it, because we are ultimate, the county is responsible for all the artifacts, right? And that's the, has to be honored, it's an obligation that the county has.
Yes. So the way I understood that is they have to maintain the artifact, but they wouldn't necessarily be responsible for keeping it open to the public.
Yeah, no, I just, I assumed that that was the crux that they.
Ownership would still be the county, or is that?
Right. The ownership of all the things in the museum would be the county.
Maybe this hasn't been determined.
Yeah. The building, you know, we're hoping to get away from having county employees having to come up and do the maintenance and the grounds and all that.
Thank you for the clarifications.
Sure. And then a couple of other things is, you know, last night I had a presentation at the Brook Trails Board about the fiber optic, optic grant that, or broadband that we're going for, and it looks, we had the deputy CEO, we had the consultant, we had another supervisor, Supervisor Williams showed up too, and is all to talk about what we're doing with bringing broadband to the Brook Trails area and Sherwood Road. So, so that's looking promising. And then the Veterans Services Office, which has been very controversial, it was moved from Observatory in Ukiah, just a couple hundred yards away, to the Public Health Building, but the veterans really didn't like that situation. And so yesterday, we decided to move it back to Observatory. So, so anyway, I just want to let people know that.
It's good to hear.
Okay? And, okay, that's about it.
All right.
Can I ask how much that cost to move the things back?
I don't know. But the veterans, yesterday, they offered to help move the things back, so, so we'll see if we can use their power.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
John, I have a question. In July 2022, we, we passed, or the county passed Major P., and that's a fire and service proclamation, and it was 4510 general tax, quarter percent tax. How much has been distributed to local fire departments? And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I just want to know how much was delivered into the program.
Well, my understanding is, we just voted on that yesterday to approve the, the distribution plan, but we've already sent out the money to the Mendocino County Fire Safe Council. They, and the other money is in the, what they call cobblestone, which is the county's payment program. And so it's, you know, I heard, when I checked a couple weeks ago, the kind of the check was in the, in the hopper or whatever. But, you know, there has been contro, you know, reports in the paper that the county was holding up this money, but according to what I've heard is that everything's moving along. So.
Okay, so some, so our local area has got some payment on, on this money?
Well, they said very shortly.
Okay, so they haven't yet, but they will get some.
That's kind of my understanding.
Okay.
Right?
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you. All right, next we have the Willets Chamber Commerce's annual report and the City Council presentation.
Not everybody's standing up. Hello. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and our City Manager and City Staff. I am Lisa Kowaznica. For those of you who don't know me, but most do, I'm the President of the Willets Chamber of Commerce. So I wanted to take this opportunity to address City Council with our annual report. We're going to break it up into three sections, so that you get a little point of view from, from two other board members. I'd like to introduce our board, made up of volunteers in our community, they're business owners, and community members, and a hospital administrator. Our executive board member, Linda Givens, executive board member, Kristi Moss, our historian, Chuck Perseco, our volunteer coordinator, who's not here tonight, Lou Selaya, board member, Joe, who's not here, Joe Rigo, it puts his wife in that, and our chamber coordinator, Susan Mahoney, who you see periodically, because she reports usually for us. These volunteers have given countless hours and are committed to the health and prosperity of our chamber. We appreciate how the council works with us and their continued support and partnership in events and guidance to better serve Willets. As a business owner myself, for the past 12 years in this community, I have been involved with the chamber for 10 years. It quickly goes by, you know, you don't realize how long you've been involved in something until you actually do the math. Like every volunteer organization, there is always an ebb and flow of participation and community involvement. Our community, like many others, have seen the increase and decrease in the economy, and we know the needs that we all share, but we have survived. And as business owners and community leaders, we are all on the same path and on the same, we're all in this together. The chamber is excited and optimistic about future and upcoming events, implementing new services, creating a new membership plan, promoting more tourism, and we have continued with our, our traditions, such as our local car and bike show, business mixers, promotions, community events, and supporting other service groups with their events as well. Our goal is always the prosperity of Willets, to bring commerce to our community, promote tourism, roundtable new ideas, and to make Willets a better place to live, work, and play. In the words of our past Executive Director, Ron Moorhead, "The chamber is the front porch to the city of Willets." With that, I'd like to pass this on to Linda Givens. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Linda Givens. I'm the hospital administrator at Howard Hospital. I came to Willets in 2017, you know, and then eight days later, you had the wildfire. It was a warm welcome, it was a warm welcome. And of course, the community was, did awesome in that event, which was very impressive. I joined the chamber board in 2018, being very impressed with local business owners and their commitment to the chamber. Now, realizing that this is volunteer, and all these business owners volunteering their time, I thought was kind of, kind of noble. Time is always present. I'm going to talk a little bit about the year 2023, which is the year we're talking about, right? Because we're just starting 2024. We hired, in 2023, we hired Susan Mahoney, and we did 1,800 volunteer hours and answered 500 phone calls. We purchased, we didn't purchase, we had donated, maybe Adventist Health did that, some computers and got some expertise, so we could update a membership list, talk about a website, and look at our existing contracts. The board's goal was to reestablish relationships, that was our overall goal for 2023, and we did that with eight mixers, which included the Rotary Club, Lions Club, North, North County Center, College Center, Mendocino County Museum Store, the main house, Florish and Flow, the Muntry, maybe many of you saw us in the paper with our ribbon cutting, the California Visitor Center in Ukiah. We also participated in events sponsored by the Visit Mendocino, which promoted tourism. Chamber assists small business, and we did that by sponsoring the calendar page and the Willets Weekly, also supporting a local, small business of the Willets Weekly, and allow businesses to promote their events on this calendar. We hope to, and I, I should save that for Danata, she'll talk about what our dreams are for 2024. The chamber supports the community by participating in the Land Use Committee, that was the 20-year plan, the Shoplifting and Retail Theft Forum, the 95th Birthday of Howard Hospital, the Blue Zone Ribbon Cutting at Roots in the hospital. And then building on last year's business, we put on a conference, and we had started that in 2022. We did an economic summit for small business owners with local and federal government reps and local economic development, Development Center. And we planned to, you know, it's kind of our ongoing plan to do that every year. Hopefully, we've been doing it in January, it'll probably be in February. And then we've had involvement in developing the digital signage, which is very close to launch. Our events, we do the annual car and bike show, and we're going to do it again this year, May 26th. So be out there, I have lots of people going to participate. I, I think I'm going to actually enter a car. Last year, we did about 106 cars, this year, we're, you know, hoping 150. John tells us, we can show 150 cars. We have a lot of ideas about how we get outside people to, to come to that event, should be fun. We partner and, or sponsor Blues and Brew, Claws for a Cause, the Willets for Optimists, the Willets Community Theater, Center for the Art, of course Frontier Days, we always sponsor the tiara, and the art walk, and of course, the high school yearbook. And now I'm going to turn over to my other board member, Danita.
My name is Danette Rigo, and I am a new business owner in Willets and excited to be a volunteer with the Chamber of Commerce. My husband and I opened Essential Fleet Services in August of last year, and immediately we reached out to the Chamber of Commerce for some feedback into doing business here in Willets. We are very proud to be part of the 18% membership growth that we've experienced in last year. Now, my husband and I are serving on the Board of Directors specifically for membership and onboarding, and we are excited to be ambassadors for the future of what, what the future holds for Willets as we move forward to establish the building blocks for future growth and opportunity for business development, not just along Main Street, but beyond. Our blueprint for success was developed at our Chamber Leadership Retreat, January of this year. It was facilitated by Marsha Lonich, our Human Resource Leader and Team Performance Coach. We clarified our mission and established a plan to guide the execution of these steps that were needed to stay true to our mission. Our two-year plan has us headed to our 100-year anniversary with a focus on four pillars of building. Our first pillar is our building block of membership. We have a devoted committee actively working to lay out our tiered membership plan, with pay options for every type of business and business budget, with benefits for each tier. This committee is actively meeting with the plan for a membership drive to have a soft rollout on July of this year, with our big membership launch, January of 2025, that we're very excited to hear out for. I'm just thinking about like a big celebration of a grand ribbon cutting for our membership launch, our own ribbon cutting. Our second pill of, our second pillar that we're really focusing on this year as well is our social media and web relaunch. As we, as we all know, social media and a modern and engaging web presence are key for connection and communication within Willets and beyond. We are actively soliciting for proposals for our web design, and know that this will also be a key factor in our membership, in our membership development. Our third pillar is that of our balanced calendar, calendar of events. We have an engaged committee that is working to manage our calendar of events, and as you've just heard from Linda Givens, we've had many successful events in the past, and this next year's calendar is alive with many exciting events that we have to look for. Not only our annual events that we know are those items that we focus on, like our car show that is coming up that we're so excited for, and particularly thinking about how it's going to be right on Main Street this year, and that is very exciting for all of us as we look forward to what that's going to bring in, not just tourism, but that support of our Main Street, those businesses right there. So we're excited to see what John's committee has got for us there. Our fourth pillar for growth is our new business onboarding. We have an active committee that is working to develop an onboarding program for all of our existing members, as well as our new membership, as we relaunch in 2025. So as we come out of the past and we look to the future with anticipation, we are very excited about what the future holds for us. Our membership onboarding program is going to be vibrant and engaging with an opportunity for business. for business support and networking and all that comes with the benefits of membership for the Chamber of Commerce. We are positioned for success, and we stand tall and continue to build on these four pillars. And we thank the city for their support, which is really the support of our beloved town. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Anybody from council have a question?
Question, nobody mentioned the state of, state of everything.
State of things.
The state of things that you recently, I just wondered if you wanted to give us a quick thumbnail of what happened there?
State of things.
So in January, we, I think Lynda referred to it as an economic summit, but it was called the State of Things, and it was patterned after the State of the Union idea. So we contacted Jim Wood's office, and we had John Hascheck, and we had Mayor Rodriguez there. So each layer, we started the larger picture first, and the Assemblyman was not there, but his representative was, and she went into detail about some of the healthcare updates within the county, some of the intricacies of that particular district. It's one of the largest geographic districts in the state, and when you compare his job of, you know, getting the word out to people over that area versus someone who just has Orange County or something like that, it's, it's really quite a task. There was a lot of very interesting information as a new person here in Willets. I, I really learned a lot from her presentation. Supervisor Hascheck gave a lot of information about the current state of things in the county, and we generally hear that here, but the purpose of this seminar was to give business owners who are busy and don't have the time to follow things in detail, an opportunity to just come and hear short, concise presentations about things that might be important to them. And then we heard a lot about what's happening in Willets and different programs and where the city stands on different projects. And again, you all are very familiar with that, but it was quite well attended, and I think that people really walked away with some very good and valuable information. And we tried to also give it an informal atmosphere so that people could also network and, and try to meet other business owners there. So I think it was a good success. Everyone had good things to say about it, and I think that it's an idea for the future to give, you know, our elected officials an opportunity to speak directly to whoever is interested in coming. So that was our State of Things.
Thank you. Maybe you could stay there for one more second. I just had a couple of questions that way, since you're already there. What are the regular business hours currently at the Chamber?
The Chamber's open from 10 to 4, Monday through Thursday, for the time being, because the skunk train is closed down and city is closed on Friday as well. So we've gone to Monday through Thursday. I anticipate that when the skunk train opens up again and has trains on Friday, that will be there Monday through Friday, 10 to 4.
Okay. And then two more questions. One is the fourth quarter business support. What is, do you have a plan for 2024 on ways to support specifically retail for, for fourth quarter?
For fourth quarter?
For fourth quarter sales during the Christmas, the holiday season? Wondering if there is a comprehensive plan that, you know, as you're moving forward and you're thinking about, you know, raising the bar and, and all these good plans that I heard about, is there a plan to help support retail business for that fourth quarter? Which is so crucial to, you know, we all want to see the shops in our local downtown area thrive, and, you know, there's a perception that the Chamber of Commerce is, is hopefully a big part of, of that success and helping businesses succeed. And so I was just wondering if you've started to have conversations yet about what kind of support pieces you could put in play to help retail businesses during the fourth quarter?
I don't think we have a specific plan at this point. However, I know that we're discussing in, in hand, going hand in hand with supporting in a stronger way shop small, shop local idea, which is around Thanksgiving time and ramp up through that. What Danette was talking about was that we had a retreat, and we have reorganized the way the Chamber is functioning right now. So Lisa is our event coordinator, she has a committee under her, and they are in the process of developing a timeline and looking for opportunities to promote business throughout the year, and specifically at the Christmas time, yeah, for that last quarter. So we don't, I don't, I'm not aware of any specific thing we're doing right now, but we're definitely focused on each and every part of the year and seeing what we can plug in to get that started.
A larger vision.
Yes.
And then I assume that Lisa, at a later date, will probably give us more details on the plan for that particular quarter.
Yes.
Fair enough.
Your website, is it currently up to date?
Our website is struggling. We were, you know, feel like it's kicking it down the road, but we cannot, or I've been given counsel not to try to update the website that we have. We've talked about this in the past, that half the platform of our website is proprietary property of a contracted company that they went with that was a Chamber marketing company. So we, to do that, we'd have to rewrite that half of the, the website. It's an old website, it's not very interactive, and the, the detail of it is very readily available on your phone, and I don't see that as our vision going forward. So I've written a grant to the community foundation, we should hear late March, early April, to have funding for a new website that is much more interactive, will help us be able to administer these events in a more modern way. If you're in the car show, you should be able to just register and pay right then and there, and there's nothing like that on our website. So that's part of the, the plan, is to get a new website, and also, hand in hand with that is to really have someone who is professional at it promote our social media, so that when we're promoting other nonprofits and we're going to, you know, give them a boost in, in their presentation, that we can make a much bigger impact than what we've been able to do. I can post events of other nonprofits on our website. It's cumbersome, they have to fill out a template, I have to print it, and then plug it into the, to the website. The format is WordPress, and, and it's just too cumbersome for a volunteer to be able to update it on a regular basis. So we're going to get a new website that's easy to make current and easy to interact with. My vision is that rather than just plug in data, that this website will create a feeling about what is Willets, you know, why would you want to come here? And make it much more inviting so that, you know, we'll have videos on there, we'll have pictures of our events, we'll talk, be much easier to be able to promote what's coming. And the other thing that the community really has been asking for, for this last year, is a community calendar, so that they don't double book things, but also so that, you know, you can look on any day and see what's happening there, like there's bingo every Friday at the senior center, just that kind of detail. My vision is to have it as a link, so that anyone can just get on a website and link right over to this. If you're planning a vacation, you can see what's going to happen during that timeframe on every level, not just big events, but this is what Willets is doing. So I, I just, you know, more like Visit Mendocino's website, although I feel like theirs is almost too interactive, you need the cursor and three videos pop up, but it is all about videos and you're just creating that feeling, what is Willets? You know, why would we go there and try to promote that?
Well, I know that's been the thing in the community where something happens and it never fails somebody's, you know, several events at the same time.
Yes.
In the past, the Chamber was the place to go to make sure you, if you were going to schedule your event, you didn't do it on a day that somebody else was, so everything could be well attended, so.
Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one, one last question. I was just, I was listening to your presentation about Membership Drive, and I was thinking, as a business owner, what are, what would be the motivating factors for somebody to, to be a part of the membership? Because as a new member, I, it sounds wonder, if I wanted to be a new member, it sounds like there's some good things that are, that are going to be in the works. I still have some questions about, you know, how does it benefit me as a business? But if you're going to pay into a membership, you, you kind of want to know your value.
Yes.
And so you don't have to lay it all out, but if somebody wanted to become a member, is there a brochure? There, how are they going to find out what the benefits are?
Right. So we're working on a new brochure, we have a trifold one that's out of date. So we will have a tiered pricing, and each line will show what tier gets that benefit. So some of the benefits are sort of leap of faith that the Chamber will be the front porch of, of Willets and promote businesses. But part of, some of it is really concrete stuff, like I have a plan that when the skunk train opens up again, that I corral those folks as they're coming out, and combined with our digital signage that we've been talking about, get, hand out a card to them that they can use the QR code right then and there and see where else they'd like to be in Willets. But also, for a higher tier pricing, your restaurant might be listed on that card. So there will be some very concrete things that will benefit higher paying members.
So I know in the past, if I remember correctly, your tiers were based on how many employees you had?
Yes.
So you're changing that.
Yeah, I don't agree with that at all. It's already the large businesses in town that are supporting a lot of the nonprofits, and I don't think they should be penalized for having more.
I'll be honest, I didn't like the system, so I'm glad you're there.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's going to be more of an all a cart thing. For these, all these benefits here, you can choose what level you think you want. Maybe you're not interested in being on the card, that's not your business. So you can pick and choose which level that you want to be at. It's pretty typical now in chambers, and I know that's the format in Ukiah, they've done that for quite a while, although theirs is really quite the kitchen sink full of options there. But for us, we'll, we'll keep it fairly simple, and I also believe that individuals should be able to join the Chamber, so that should be a bare minimum, but those voices need to be heard, and it makes us stronger to have people at the individual level supporting us as well. So.
Thank you for the presentation. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this agenda item? No? All right. All right. Next order of business is the enactment of ordinances. We have none before us, so we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have the city council minutes from February 14th, 2024. And any questions about minutes? Any points of clarification? Would you like to move?
I would like to move.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anybody from the public have a comment? Nope. Any up at the, up here? Nope, seeing none. I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie? Strong? Stransky?
Upstate.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Oderick?
Yes.
All right. So we are passing the minutes in the meeting. We'll move.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Yes. All right.
So this has come up in MCAG before, when members of the board have not been present, they thought that they couldn't vote on minutes that were in a packet. But the way it was clarified to me at MCAG was if you read the packet, you're able to vote on it. So could we get some clarification here for city council? Is that the case?
I believe you correctly stated it.
Okay. So you don't have to have been present in the meeting, but so long as you read the minutes that are in the packet, if there's no problem, you can vote to approve those minutes.
Right, and if you were absent and you read the minutes and you had questions, you could certainly call up with the manager with your questions.
Great. Thank you.
But you can abstain as well.
Yeah.
You have the option. All right. Monthly activity reports, Business License Activity Report for January 2024. Let's see. Nothing there. The Business Activity Report is also in there, so there's nothing to cover there unless anybody wants to add something. We have no commissions, agencies, and authority business before us today, and so I will move to the City Manager Reports and Recommendations, the first item being the discussion, oh, the first item being the discussion of possible acceptance of the East Commercial Street Corridor Master Plan. And before we move to the master plan, this evening, this is a, a report and a, a report and a recommendation, so you'll be voting for the possible acceptance. And I had a conversation with our attorney, Jim Lance, prior to the meeting, just to clarify because there's been, there's been some different ways that maybe we have addressed matters whether they're, let me just put it this way. I own property on Commercial Street, in the Commercial Street Corridor Master Plan, my property is identified. And I want to make it very clear that although my property is identified in there, the improvements that were listed were the sidewalk, and I'm requesting that you remove both the photo and the, the indication that there's a need for repair there, because the repair work was done, and I paid for that $35,000 worth of repairs out of my own pocket, as is my responsibility as a property owner, so I don't want the illusion that there is work that needs to be done on that sidewalk as identified in that plan. And because there is the perception that I may benefit, the perception, I'm going to remove myself and recuse myself from this item, and I'm going to turn it over to Vice Mayor, and he'll let me know when the item is done, and I'll re-enter the rep.
I have one other sort of House question, and it says acceptance of, of the master plan. Isn't it, aren't we actually, yes, to adopt it?
Good point. Since this was advertised as a public hearing to formally, to adopt it, the council, the community development department has in the past, has policy statements and other planning documents that are in their repertoire that has not been formally adopted. Knowing that, like I said, it wasn't advertised as a public hearing, I listed it as an acceptance, and as we move forward with potential implementation of elements, we can do adoption at that phase, or notice if it's going through a grant application to fund projects.
Isn't it by virtue of being on the agenda, isn't it bad of public hearing?
We didn't have a, I didn't list it as a dedicated public hearing, calling it out with the proper notification.
And then if you also, our city attorney could also elaborate on the city's policy of what to do in, in times when there's a, an appearance or otherwise?
Well, if, if a member perceives that they have a financial conflict of interest, they have a duty under the Political Reform Act to announce that, as the mayor has just done, and identify what that conflict is. And the, the government code sets forth certain other requirements, such as not voting, not participating, not being present, and to leave the room. And that's a government code 87,105, I believe. And I'll just say that I anticipated this issue was going to come up this evening, and so this afternoon, I wanted to see if there were any recent advice letters on the Fair Political Practices Commission's website. That agency receives inquiries from other cities and other public agencies inquiring about whether a member might have a conflict and asks for advice. So I found an advice letter that was issued last year at the request of the Town Attorney for the Court of Madera Township, and it seemed like a case very similar to this one, and I'll just, I'll be brief. Coming up on an agenda, the township of Court of Madera planned to adopt and implement a master plan for its Parks and Recreation Department. They have five parks in town, it would be, I believe, a 10-year plan where they would decide what kind of infrastructure improvements there should be, sidewalk improvements, drainage, and other major improvements. improvements there should be, sidewalk improvements, drainage, and other major improvements. And one of the council members of the township lived 200 feet away from one of the parks. And so the township attorney contacted the FPPC. And in a nutshell, the advice letter stated that because property was owned by a member within 500 feet of the property that was under consideration by the township, there's a presumption that there's a material financial effect upon the, that particular council member. And that presumption can only be overcome by clearing the missing evidence that the decision will not have a measurable impact upon the membership property. And so I thought that was a very similar thing. Here we're considering a master plan for this corridor. Township considered a master plan for the parking recreation system. And similarly, we have a member of this council who lives up within that corridor, adjacent to it, and also within 500 feet of a park. And so it seemed like if the FPPC was going to issue an advice letter that the members should recuse themselves, I would think that if we posed a similar question to the FPPC on, on these facts, we'd get a similar result.
Thank you. You have a question?
And there have been questions in the past about, what about improvements on Main Street? And some members have businesses on Main Street. And there are different rules that apply to businesses than real property owners. And I haven't gone back to see whether or not our prior decisions or lack of making a decision was proper in the past, but in this case, we're talking about real property ownership. And it seemed clear that we're within this 500-foot rule applies to real property ownership.
You know, and I know in the past, Jim, I know in the past also there have been issues where, when we were going to make street improvements in general, that you said benefited everybody.
Right, right.
And it just so happened that you were.
Yeah, there's a, there is a carve-out in the conflicts statute on, on, uh, street and drainage improvements. That, those are, those are necessary, whether you live within 500 feet or not, and those will not trigger a conflict.
Okay. I want to throw that out there just because sometimes when we do street work, we all have to kind of go, well, I've lived near there, and so, okay. And again, in reading this plan, Brian, this is kind of like a, like a roadmap, but a lot of things are triggered and not necessarily funding. It's not like we're going to run off and do this verbatim. It's, there's ideas to, in the back, I saw the addendum for possible funding of certain things as we move forward, and those things would trigger what you said would be the, the public hearing when it came to spending the money or going for a grant or something. Is that correct?
Yes, so basically what we're presenting tonight, Mr. Bechel from Terrain Landscape Architecture is here, who has been here many occasions. This is a pretty comprehensive master plan that looks at a whole corridor, and it's really focusing on the public realm, which is the, the public facilities which relate to the fields. We heard about the museum, the library, the city parks, and the streetscape. It has a pretty extensive implementation schedule. Once again, we were fortunate to have a little bit cross pollination with the California Beautification Grant. That is a separate entity, but some of the items were already early in this stage identified. We were able to transfer to those. Not all, not everything in this document was in that plan. The goal here is if the council moves forward with the document as it's presented tonight, would be to look at funding through grant opportunities to implement other provisions of this document.
And as we look at those specifically, so hypothetically, and I think Larry brought up lighting in a certain area, that we would either trigger looking at specific lighting or not doing lighting there, or changing the lighting, or whether it's solar or not solar, et cetera, as we basically focus in on a particular area. Is that correct?
Yeah, so once again, when the council moves through subsequent budgeting, budgeting processes, as we look at grant opportunities that staff brings before the council for their consideration, we're going to look at the implementation schedule and look at what can be implemented and followed through on the document. It's a wish list, it's a menu, not everything's going to be implemented. It is a, basically, a library of concepts and ideas that were generated over several public forums, interaction with significant stakeholders that were identified, and also through discussion through staff level meetings to figure out what can happen, what cannot happen.
Okay. So I think go ahead with you.
I have a quick question about that. So in, in the packet, it, as you say, gives a phased-in implementation schedule, sort of a rough timeline of when some of these things could be implemented. But it sounds like what you're saying is if we think of this as a library of options to choose from, we don't necessarily think that by accepting this plan, all of this will be implemented.
No.
So my question is, if only some of it is implemented, how will we know if the plan is a success? Is there a certain amount that we would anticipate being implemented, so we would say, good, we did this plan, we executed this plan well? So if 10% were done, is that a good, a good thing? Are we aiming for 70%? I mean, is there kind of a rough idea of how much we think might actually be implemented? And then how do we know when we're done or successful?
I don't think a, a community is ever done with planning implementation. It's ongoing. If we're fortunate and we hit all the right notes with grant opportunities, we may do 100%. We might apply for every grant opportunity and only get one opportunity that's awarded to us subsequently, and it may only be a small portion of the, the implementation schedule. We are going to make recommendations as that when staff presents budget proposals to the council, then maybe have opportunities to look at lower tiered items through general fund activity, maybe through Measure K, which are, once again, was allocated for improvements to public facilities and the parks. I don't have a perfect answer of what is the ratio of success. If we're successful in landing any number of grants, even one, that implements key provisions, we're done good. It was a good opportunity. And if this document gets something implemented or generates further consternation and said, hey, the plan had this envision, it's not going to happen, but maybe this can go in that direction, then it also fulfilled a role in keeping that dialogue open with the stakeholders, staff, and the council.
I appreciate that answer. I ask because I think that in our community, there's a certain amount of plan fatigue. We, the city historically has created lots of plans. We've even heard recently that we have many plans that have not been implemented or have not been fully implemented, that we may need to, at some point, go over and sort of, you know, have a state of the plans to know, you know, where we can move forward. So I, so I'm asking, how will we know if we've been successful with this particular plan? Because I think there are members of the community who are wondering that. It's very exciting to look at these boards and think of the possibilities for our community, but when we have so many plans that we haven't implemented, then there's a question of, here we go again, how do we know if we won?
You know, like I said, it's, not many plans have a, a self-authored or a trigger point that, hey, we reached a successful level of implementation. This product, this plan was heavily influenced by pursuing grants. We, we heard council concerns about, don't deviate too much from general fund to implement provisions in this. So it was structured and focused. It was kind of packaged to go after grants where we can roll into a grant application a suite of opportunities. We can do many items, we can pull items one through five from the list, or maybe three, eight, and six, because they meet certain criteria in grants. Every grant has a different proposal or intent that it's trying to implement. If you look in the resolution, if the council adopts it, there is a provision in there where there's an obligation to the city management, city manager, and community development that on annual basis that we would come back before the council and the public to give an update, uh, if we've been successful on attaining any implementation components, either through grant success, general fund, or even things that we were able to do in-house with the resources that we already exist.
Thank you very much.
I do believe, Sam does have a PowerPoint presentation. He's been advised that basically it's going to be abbreviated, because like I said, he's been here before. There has been some changes since the last time Sam presented to the council and the public at the January meeting, and we want to highlight that. And basically, once again, allow the council to have the opportunity to ask Sam's staff, Sam and staff, any concerns or questions. Thank you, Sam.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez, city council, city staff, thank you for having me back. My name's Sam Bechel. I'm with Terrain Landscape Architecture out of Ashland, Oregon. And I'm here today to present our final draft for the East Commercial Street Corridor Master Plan. As Brian mentioned, you know, last time I was here, it was supposed to take 15 minutes. It took about an hour. This time, you know, we've been, we've been over the plan and what it contains. And what I really want to highlight are the changes that we've made. We, we had a really good meeting with Roots of Power, which was a request that we had last time to reach out to more community organizations. We met with Roots of Power, we got input from them, and really positive feedback. The overall feeling that we got was that they, they really appreciated being included and having, you know, having some kind of recognition in this planning process. Very positive. Roots, yes, yes. Oh, I'm not, oh, there we go. Okay, so I am going to just kind of scroll through and, and kind of highlight the things that have changed. We've gone through, uh, street corridor improvements, light crossings, new striping improvements that are all contained within the document. We have our signage and opportunities identified, and then new opportunities for the Willetts Crossing, for the, for a new Willetts sign. One thing that we did in the document is we really highlighted the, the whatever components are funded by the Clean California Grant and, and identified that, you know, that was really an effort by the city planning staff to secure that money. And it's, it's really, it's their, it's their victory that we have the new restroom, or sorry, the new farm, uh, farm pavilion structure, as well as chess tables in Bud Snyder Park. I think there's also a mural that's funded for the bathrooms. So that's all really exciting. We didn't have any major changes to this concept. We did confirm with Roots that, you know, everything that we are proposing, none of it is going to affect their operation. You know, it's just going to enhance the street frontage, and the idea being that they will still be able to do everything that they do now, but just have a new area to kind of present their work to the public. So on this image, we have the Recreation Grove Park Plan. What we did on this is we actually added a quarter-mile loop around it, just as another passive recreation opportunity. Yes.
Sam, did, did you have a chance to network with the Little League folks or any other rec people or frontier days in that area, just to say, hey, this is a concept, any input or anything?
So we did have input, I know from the museum and also library. We, during some of our community meetings, we did meet with some of the recreation folks. We did have input from the soccer, from soccer and baseball. I also know that through the whole process that they were involved with the city manager's office.
And we did invite, extend invitations out to them for this meeting for tonight.
To?
To attend and participate.
Baseball and frontier days?
Little League, soccer, and frontier days.
Okay, yeah.
I have a question. Somebody had commented to me that the pavilion for the farmer's market in the city park seemed too small for a farmer's market, or at least hope for the expansion. Is that going to be?
So I think the sizing of the pavilion structure was really informed by the funding opportunity. So there will be, I think, an opportunity for 12 farm stands to be under the pavilion, but then there's also room in the field adjacent, you know, for more, for more farmer market tents and, and, you know.
So once again, the pavilion was identified early in this planning effort that was transferred to the Clean California Beautification Grant. So that was one of the opportunities that we took. Yes, it was sized according to the budget allocation that we had, and it could be scaled up in time.
So it could be added to in the future if we have demand?
So, yeah, Recreation Grove, Quarter Mile Track was added.
Is that the boardwalk?
That is this, it's, man, I, I did not realize how this, how it would be to see, but it's this orange line that goes around the perimeter here.
So that's identified as boardwalk, but it's also identified as Quarter Mile Perimeter Track?
Yes.
It's just a portion of the support?
Portions of it are boardwalk, portions of it are, are concrete, and then portions of it would be like decomposed granite path.
Is that because of drainage issues in that?
Yeah, because of drainage issues, and then, and, and just like, I guess, material constraints of actually having like one, yeah, because.
So is the boardwalk portion raised? Would that make it a, a different elevation for people who are maybe limited, or?
So the entire path would be ADA compatible. Essentially, like, anything that we put in would be ADA compatible. And, and the, the, the concept was that the boardwalk would kind of span over some little stormwater collection areas, but they would be at the same grade. Yeah. Okay, so one thing that we added was we, we defined on the Northern Sports Complex, we further defined our water fill station area. Sorry, this is kind of a weird service, so I can move this over. So over here, we actually sized this for a 30-foot-long truck with a fill, fill station that has its own entry and exit onto East Commercial Street that's separated from the skate park. So it's kind of, it's its own, it's its own area for the water fill station. Yeah. So other changes that we, that we made is, we went back through the plant list and made sure that it is 100% deer proof, because I know that was something that was asked, and I said, yes, it was, and then I went back through and made sure it was. So there was some stuff, there was some stuff that we removed from the list, just to let you know.
There is no such thing as 100% deer proof.
Well, there, there are plants that are.
There's a line item in there for importing walls from Canada.
Yeah, yeah. So those were the, those were the major changes that we made. If there are any questions, please feel free to ask me.
I guess for the public's sake, this is a concept plan, and the hope is that as we identify funding or the opportunity exists or during the budgetary process, but I guess what, some of the questions I had got from some folks was that, you're going to do this? I go, no, some of this is included in another grant. Some of this is something we'd like to see and obviously show up and give us some input at the time, and so at a later date. And I'll just use the pickleball courts that moved or whatever, that, whether that or the raised boardwalk or whatever, that at some point that comes up, that the public will have an opportunity to weigh in on that, and that's only dependent on whether we find funding for those things.
That's correct, yes.
So we're not promising to do all of this the way it is, and it's going to happen next week kind of thing. It's a concept that we would like to pursue.
Yes, it's a, it's a concept so that we can pursue the funding.
So Vice Mayor, I just want to make it clear, this plan was well thought out to be inspirational. There's elements in different phases that can be pulled and placed elsewhere. It, it's creating a vision. It's like the, the concepts and the cross-sections are showing what if. If you threw everything at it, this is what you would have. Most grant opportunities don't give you the luxury to be that expressive in your proposals. So we, one application may be we improve the street lining. Another could be for a complete street element. Another one could be for the field enhancements. It is kind of a pick and choose, and once again, it is a, going back to what Member Connie was saying, we planned out as a community. I would say no. If we can continue having a dialogue, and if the citizens, the residents are concerned that we're overplanned, then I would encourage them to attend meetings and meet with staff and saying, okay, what are we doing? What's the next step? How are we going to turn this into concrete examples? A good community is always planning, is always looking forward. Maybe we're not the greatest on implementing. Maybe we're not the greatest on implementation, we'll work on that. But before we can implement, we need a plan, we need a vision, we need to aspire to, you know, influence the council on where we should put budgets, where we should pursue grant opportunities.
And again, in the interest of transparency and that letting folks know that this isn't going to be, we're locked into this, that there could be changes, and that some of the folks invited that maybe didn't show up today at a later date, if it involves them and we go on, they'll have an opportunity to weigh in, is kind of what I want to throw out there to the public, so that we're not, just because you didn't show up today, you lost your voice.
A good planning document, if, if, even if it doesn't get implemented, if it's still being used for discussion points, there's still value.
Okay.
I just, I think it's a very impressive plan, and it has some wonderful visions of what could happen, and I really appreciate all the work that went into that. And I really like what Brian just said about a while ago, that, that let's have an annual state of the plan review, so that we don't just put it on the shelf. We don't, we don't always start in with these Clean California Grant projects, but next year, we're good where we stand, and that will keep it alive.
Greta or Larry? Do you have anything? Greta or Larry?
I'm later.
All right.
I want to hear it.
All right. Any, Greta, do you have anything?
No.
All right. And I'll put it out to the public, anybody from the public that's here. Okay.
It's later?
Later.
Okay. I agree with some with Greta. I've been on the council for some 10 or 12 years now, and there are things that have come up when, let me go back. I've had time over the last three weeks that I've been in bed with my knee, that I've searched out some things that, that has gone on that everybody has forgot about. And so what I'm, what I'm saying is, I brought up three things that I think should have been done a long time ago, and we don't need anything else to do other than to do these first and then to do the other things. And one of them is the Wood Street Parking Lot Lighting, and we should have done that as a council years ago, because we are responsible for that, and the people that are in that park, in parking there, it's so dark that you couldn't even walk out. The next thing is a Westman Casino merger of, of the, to Main Street, a one-way street because of the curb and the sidewalk and the trees. We're going to have to do something with that, and that has been there since Al Kanepa built that building 35 years ago, and it still hasn't done anything. And it's, and it's, it's a catastrophe if you try to walk, and especially if you have any kind of deficiency in walking, you can't walk on that, that street. The next thing was a Van Hotel, and I don't know how many years that we have played with a Van Hotel, because that has come out, I probably went when Gordon Logan was here. And, and nothing, I mean, they're slowly doing things, but, I mean, we've, I've looked at that building for 70 years, 65 years maybe, okay, not 70, but it's, it's a mess, and we've never done anything with it. We've never pushed the people to the peak point that they're going to have to get rid of it or fix it up or something. And these are reasons that I'm not going to vote for, because we haven't done anything for all of these other things that we've done. And to have another one that is on the books someplace is not going to work for me, because you're going to have to do some stuff as a city for city, and I don't know how many people have a car that are on the city council, but you ought to drive down civil roads in this city. They're terrible. And because we don't get a grant for it, or it's not listed, we don't do it, because we don't have the money to do it. And that's just the reasons that, that I'm going to vote no on it, and I'm sorry, young man, but that's the way I feel. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Huh. That's a mouthful there, Larry. You know, I, I'm not disagreeing with you. I, I look at, I think some of the comments I've had from folks are that, what about the south end of town? What about this? And there are all these, I think we have a lot of problems in town in general. I mean, if the purpose of this is to identify and have something ready, I know during the 2000s, I kept hearing the word shovel-ready projects for, before I was even on the council, that we needed to have plans in place or concepts that we could address things. I know that we've focused on the East Commercial Street right now, and I know that we had the, the other grant there, because, I mean, the pavilion sounds really good, especially after the trees disappeared. It'd be nice to have something covered there and make that kind of a, a gathering place again. Honestly, Larry, I don't remember that pavilion that was, that everybody danced at before. I think it was, it was there, it was really tiny and don't remember it, but I would love to see something in the park that looks nice and, and it make that. And I know that that was identified early on and then moved to that other grant, so I think that's, that's kind of something nice. So I, I see this as a roadmap, but I want to, I guess I want to tell the public, look, you're not going to get everything on here right now, by now, because again, I think we, we go looking and during the budget process, whether it be the street or we, or be the lighting there at, at the parking lot there at School Street, that might be a focus of during the budget process that we need to look at, and I'm, I'm not against doing that if we can identify funding. So, go ahead, Madge.
Just, just a quick comment, and that is that adopting this plan doesn't make this a higher priority than the immediate things that you are identifying, and I agree with those three things that you identified, but they are, they're not mutually exclusive. By adopting this, we aren't saying, we're going to do this before we're going to do any of these other things. It means that we're going to do it to the extent that we can work it into our budget and have funding, and these are good things to do, but they, they don't rise above fixing the lighting. It, you know, it's not one thing or the other. We have to, we have to make those decisions when we pass our budget and identify which projects go ahead each year.
Thank you for saying that, Madge. I think that's an important thing to remember. That's one of the hardest parts of being on council is juggling competing priorities. We have so many needs in our community, so many dreams for how to make Willet's the best that it can be, and we can't possibly afford to do all of them at the same time. So prioritizing becomes the difficult part, but that doesn't mean that we can't stop dreaming, and we can't stop inviting people like you who have the ability to give us a library of ideas to choose from. It doesn't mean we should stop doing that. So I appreciate this plan. I'm excited about quite a lot of it, primarily because a few years ago, when the water truck fill station was in such high demand, here on the council, we heard so many complaints from community members about how do we make East Commercial Street safer? And that is the predominant vision in this plan, is how do we make East Commercial safer? It is a recreational district. It's used by a huge number of people, not just in Willet's, but in the whole 95490 area, whether they're going to the soccer fields, or the baseball fields, or the rodeo, or the museum, or just charter school kids going across the street to the library. How do we slow people down and make sure that everyone who's using it, whether they're in a car, or on foot, or on a bike, or pushing a stroller, feels safe? And that's what this plan is aimed at. So I'm excited about supporting it tonight.
Did you have something else to add? Oh, okay. You know, and I think one, one more thing, and I think, Larry, I, I want to support this only because I've been to plenty of events at the Rec Grove, and I've been there where the car show has driven over, or somebody in the car show has driven over a sprinkler head or something, where they've sunk in back there because of the heavy rain, or the trees, or something. I would really like to beautify that area, not just for Frontier Days, but all the way around. But again, priorities are such, and I thank you, Madge, for putting it out there, that we're not going to do that, and thank you, Greta, for talking about plans, because I'll tell you, I felt like we took a lot of heat when we were talking about the, the traffic plan that, at the south end, where people were saying, you had that plan and you're ignoring that plan, and I think that's, that's why I was kind of asking Brian, I don't want to be beholden to this plan if, you know, priorities change, or there's a safety issue, or public comment is such that something wants, but I, like Greta, I don't want to stop dreaming of making things nicer in town, so.
I would like to move that we, how do we refer to?
Accept.
Acceptance, acceptance of the East Commercial Street Quarter Master Plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion and a second.
Can I just clarify the point that Mayor Rodriguez brought up? If there's an update needed on an item that has in fact been taken care of, that we make sure that, that shows up?
Yeah, I saw Sam taking note at that same time, so.
Thank you.
We'll incorporate that.
All right. Could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
No.
Pollis?
Yes.
All right. Motion carried. Could someone go get our mayor?
And during that, I just want to note the leadership through Dusty Dooley and Taylor Perry on overseeing this effort, and definitely Sam. I expect we're going to see Sam in other meetings, putting forward project proposals and grant opportunities.
And thank you again to the Planning Department for pulling off the unbelievable win of the Clean California Grant, so that some of these things will be implemented much sooner than later. It's very exciting. Thank you.
All right. We'll be moving on to Item 8B, which is the recognition of our interim chief, James Connor's commitment and service. And I'll turn it over to City Manager Bender.
Many of us in this room knew this day was going to come. We didn't want it to come. Mr. Connor and I have developed a very close relationship, very professional. The amount of insight he has provided to me, I thought I knew some understanding of police department functionality after all my years in municipal operations, but he took it to a new level. I'm pretty in awe of his ability to get that department, you know, it was in sad shape. Unfortunately, decisions were made, it was a legacy. He came in and he recognized what needed to be done, and he did it effectively and without creating further. And that, that alone took a skill set that I was not expecting that man to have when he came to our doorstep and said, I'm here to help, and I will always help you. He's going away, it's not by choice, not by his own choice. It's because of Cal Purr's and his retirement, and unfortunately, he has to look out for his own interests, and I respect that. He has developed a relationship with the rest of senior staff and all staff members in this organization, and predominantly the officers. The amount of respect that they have shown to him in this last several months of his tenure was very awe-inspiring and, you know, generated a level of respect that I think that, that department needed, and they did a great job in respecting him and working with him. They went through tough times, long hours, constant overtime shifts, some unknowns of what was going to happen on the next, you know, what was going to happen in the next day. But he saw them through the darkest hour, and he put them on the right path. And when Chris Dewey takes ownership or command on March 4th, he's going to recognize the decisions that were made are going to set him for his next tenure, Mr. Dewey's tenure as the chief of police, interim chief of police for the next several months. So in that, I want to recognize Mr. Connor's efforts. Godspeed on your travels. And, and I've had this conversation before, you have a lot to offer, please consider continuing an interim role somewhere, because your wisdom, what you can offer another community is viable. So thank you.
I'm going back to golf and you go off. And walk in the dog.
Your kind, personable, and professional approach to problems and solutions, and just being open-minded to the community and the staff and the council, it's been, it's been, it's been a pleasure to have you here as Police Chief. We're going to miss you.
I'll, I'll.
Yeah.
Chief, can I just say that there's a lot of talk in the world about leadership, and you exemplify it. Your steadiness, your kindness, your openness is visible to anyone who has had the opportunity to speak with you, and I appreciate everything that you've brought to our city, and you will be missed greatly.
James, thank you again. It's really nice for you to have come in, and I've seen you out at community events, I've seen you out there interacting, and anytime I've had interactions with you, you've been quick with answers, so I appreciate it, and it's nice working with you again.
I can just say, dito. Thank you so much.
And with that, we're, we're going to take a few minutes, let's see, it's eight, let's come back at 8:30. We're going to take a break and have some cake and offer up some.
Surprise!
Offer up some more kudos and words of appreciation, and there's a card here from the staff and the council that I want to give you, that just a few sentiments of appreciation, because you will be missed. All right. We'll reconvene at 8:30. I've called the meeting back to order at 8:29 and move on. There's no additional ruble reports from city managers, so we'll be moving on to Item 9A, Discussion and Possible Action Allowing the Finance Director the Authorization to Prepare Purchase Orders in the Amount of $124,308 to Reserve Build Slots for Two 2025 Ford Police Interceptors Ahead of the Fiscal Year 2024-25 Budget Approval. Representing staff member is Manuel Orozco, our finance director.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. This is mostly procedural in nature. The reason for this is because we don't have appropriations yet for the future fiscal years, because the budget process is still ongoing. So what I'm requesting is to be able to engage in actually getting ourselves on the list in order to be able to purchase the two interceptor vehicles. And the Ford Motor Company allows, understands this type of thing as well, and understands that there may be things that happen in the future that a council won't agree to a certain amount, and so if that is the case, and, and there isn't budget for it later on, and there's no appropriations approved during the budget process, they will release us of our obligation to be able to purchase the vehicles, because they're fairly confident that they'll be able to sell them in other places. So the idea behind it is, is that we want to be able to get a slot in so that we have the ability to purchase it, because if we don't get a slot in, then, you know, we'll, it will be taken up by somebody else, and then we won't be able to purchase a new vehicle until the next year. So that's basically what this is about, is us being able to do a purchase order and be able to get ourselves on the docket to have a, the next year's car available to us.
Councilmember Connie?
I just wanted to say this came before the Finance Committee last week, and the, both Mayor and I were in support of bringing this to council today.
You know, I had a talk with Manny, because I was concerned, I guess it doesn't include setup, it's just the car. And normally, I would feel very uncomfortable since we haven't done our budget, but since I know that there's, right now, if you order a patrol car, it's, some agencies are taking up to almost a year to get them. So this kind of provides us a way of getting our name in there without being committed. It's kind of like ordering a car from Ford yourself, but if you choose not to get it, they're not going to hold you, and it has to do with the fact that we're a municipality. So in that respect, I feel okay with it. I, I think it's one where as we delve into the budget and we look at the total cost for setup and the cars, then we can discuss that further, but I also. the total cost for setup and the cars, then we can discuss that further. But I also know that if we don't get our order in, we might not get a car. I mean, there's a shortage of patrol cars because there's just a shortage right now when it comes to municipal vehicles. And in the old days, you could count on there being extras and picking them up from the dealerships, but that's not happening right now. I know in my work in the other county, they took nine months to get some cars and there were some that they said were theirs that didn't show up for another three months after they said they were theirs. So and that's when they actually paid for them.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else from the council that has any questions or comments? Anybody from the public? Seeing none. I'll ring it back up here.
I would like to move.
Okay, we have a motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. All right, the motion carries by zero. And we're going to excuse Councilmember Stransky and thank him for being here this evening. Wish you a restful evening.
Thank you for making that beautiful cake. Thank you.
All right, department monthly reports. They're presented at the second meeting of each month. So do we have anything that we want to add from the airport?
I don't have anything to add other than we are going to watch whether this pick up very closely at the airport. If it gets really loud, we will be calling in for a no cam to close the airport. So I don't want anybody up there trying to run and slide off the edge of it. So we will post that and they will know that our airport is closed if it gets down to whether we have that.
Okay, thank you. Community development? Trying to decide who gets to go.
I apologize for my whispering. I didn't know Councilmember Stransky was going to walk out because I think he was, he'd like interested in what I had to say.
Oh, he had told me before the meeting that he was going to step out at this point.
Fair enough. Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Davy Golds, your building official. City Manager Bender asked me to do a quick update on our efforts at the Van Hotel and our current enforcement of our vacant building ordinance. As you are aware, voiced by Councilmember Stransky's frustration with this building, it has been a long road on this building. We were able to gain access in June of '21, followed by lengthy code enforcement letter. The property owners refused to let us back into the building. This January, we wrote declarations in support of a warrant to submit to the Superior Court of Municipal County. We submitted a warrant for inspection on February 1st. The court authorized that warrant on February 9th and we did execute that warrant on the 21st. We gave notice posted on the building and emailed to interested parties, their attorney and person of it. We gave them advance notice on the 16th. And at 9 o'clock, 9:01, we gained entry with the help of a locksmith. And me, co-compliance officer Philip Davidson, officer assistant Amber Heda, acting fire chief John Tolman, fire marshal Eric Alvarez and Tony Madrigal were in attendance at that. And we were able to access pretty much every portion of that building. And I took over 1,200 photos and documented it very extensively.
1,200?
1,200 photos. My phone battery died on camera. So we documented very extensively. It's a very lengthy list of health and safety code violations as well as our municipal code. And I just want to let you know that we will be moving forward with code enforcement operations on that. So that is what I wanted to put out to you guys. So if you have any questions?
Thank you. And just one, yeah, one clarifying. Were we able to reach the owner of the property? And is that, is it a matter of record that you could state who the owner of the property is? Or is that something that is considered privileged information?
So public record is, it's a public record. You could call the county right now and they would tell you. The owners of record on the grant deed are Basilios Papantinaitis and Anastasia Papantinaitis. And we reached out and we forwarded to their attorney who has been representing them for the last few months. We forwarded them the warrant and the notice that we posted on the building. So they had noticed. And they did reply through two different attorneys stating their dissatisfaction with the warrant.
Okay, that's fair enough.
Yeah. So they did have notice. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Davy, start picking out what type of statue you want of yourself in the park once we get this thing completed. Yeah, no, we recognize it's one of those things that the entire community's fed up with. And while it's been a slow process, we are, do have the goal to remedy the Van Hotel and see it return to some resemblance of its past glory. So thank you for getting that update and sharing some, some good news on the progress there. Just, just a couple of things I wanted to touch on for council. It's both the housing rehab program that we're in the process of creating and implementing. And then also just to touch base on the pavilion, which is one of many elements that's being funded by the Clean California Grant. So we certainly have been, the group has been meeting. We had our kickoff meeting. We've had two bi-weekly coordination meetings. We have identified the pavilion as a priority project. We're in the process of trying to come up with a game plan to support construction as early as this year. Of course, materials, labor, there can be some delays there, but even, you know, today, we're coming up with some options and exploring those. We're not locked into 2,500 square feet. I mean, that's a number that was in the grant. But, you know, we're also exploring larger structures. We have a budget. We have $350,000 allocated. You know, I've personally spoken to Mr. Foley. I don't think we're going to get a pavilion that matches the size of the parking lot at the old Rexall Building. But we might, we might be able to come up with something that's bigger than 2,500 square feet. So we're certainly exploring that, recognizing that we do have a budget. But there's a decent amount of room over in the park. So, you know, we'll, we'll keep the council updated on that. Mr. Foley's aware that we have a budget. We haven't gotten into the design part yet. He mentioned a gentleman that helped design the pavilion down in UC Davis. That was something, not UC Davis, the city of Davis. So we'll continue to communicate with him, other members of the farmer's market, you know, the community to understand how we might best design that pavilion to serve not just the farmer's market, but obviously the community at large. So just to kind of share that clarification. And then council matched staff's desire to, to see the housing rehab program established, you know, early as possible this year so that that money could be allocated and folks could make use of those loaned funds and complete some, some improvements to their homes this summer before next winter. So we had a, we've been having coordination meetings with the team on, on creating that program. We came up with a timeline. So we're hoping to bring some guidelines, some program details to the council for approval in May, which would allow us to get the, the program up and running soon after. I think after council approved it, we'd want to have a, a community meeting with the public to introduce the, the program, make them aware of the details and the process. And then soon after that, initiate the application procedures. We'll also look to have a community meeting to present sort of staff draft work prior to coming for council for approval. So we'll gather that community input and, and make any necessary changes before presenting that to you. So anyways, just wanted to share that we do have a draft timeline and hope to get that to council in May.
The other good news is that the department received the $75,000 grant award from Cal Recite.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, we just keep doing that. So I appreciate staff making a priority to bring forward an ordinance on, related to SB 1383 and council was nice enough to unanimously approve. And, and with that, that made us eligible to seek that $75,000 in funding. And so that money is going to be primarily used to support staff in educating businesses and other entities about the requirements of SB 1383. It's going to allow us to procure, I think, compost, which is something the state requires us to do. So if we hadn't gotten this grant, we would have been out of pocket of general fund dollars likely to support that. And then we're also going to be using some of the funding to support some social media campaign to get the word out. So appreciate the state awarding that to the city and staff working hard to make us eligible to get those funds. So that was good news. Thanks, Brian.
So on the housing rehab program, I think, A, it's really important to keep that timeline so people can get the work done during the summer construction season. And wondering, do we have a list of local, preferably contractors who can do that kind of work, who are available so that we can help facilitate people actually getting it done?
Yeah, so part of the strategy is we talked about facilitating and developing a list of contractors and that would be made available to those folks that do benefit from the loan dollars. And our hope is, is that many of those contractors on the list will be some of our local folks. So we're, I think we have it as a priority to, to reach out to individuals, make them aware of that opportunity and twist their arm to, to sign up and be part of it.
Do they, do they have to be licensed contractors or could they be?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, they have to be licensed contractors. So somebody who's a handyman isn't going to...
You have to go get your license now, Madge, if you want.
I wish.
All right, any other comments? No. All right, thank you. All right, next we have finance.
The only thing that I'd just like to emphasize on this one is that the audit is actually going, moving forward for the 21-22 fiscal year. March 4th, the auditors will be here for the week and we will go through our audit and move forward fairly quickly with that. So, because they are, when they come over, they tend to be, you know, dedicated to the audit at that particular point in time. So it tends to make that process a lot faster than what it has been when we were doing it via distance and everything like that. So.
I just want to appreciate that you put in the sales tax reports and they're not as nice as I would like them to be, if they're not as rosy, but it's good to know where we stand. And I know that the city has very little direct ability to, you know, to support improving the sales picture in the city. But I, I really appreciate what the chamber is doing and, and the fact that we're, we do encourage people to get their business licenses and to, and to stay in business in our city. But anyway, it was, it was very interesting information.
Yeah.
At the finance committee meeting, you told us that the fourth quarter sales tax would begin in the next week or two.
Yes. I've received it. I haven't received it delineated yet. It was surprisingly slightly higher than I expected, which is good.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. So, yeah, I was happy with that. So we'll see how that translates. It's, it's still level, but a little bit more than what I expected, which is fine.
All right, thank you. Police Department?
Nothing further, Pat.
All right, thank you. Services and Facilities?
Hello, good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. I actually wanted to address three of those items. Well, Davy did one of them already, that Councilman Stransky brought up. Those three items are something that we've actively been working on, all those things right now. I wanted to give an update on the parking lot. We've been working with PG&E and their, and their engineers looking at, there's two existing light poles there. They're looking at those can be changed or modified. They have a single light on them now shining on the street and whether they can be doubled up to add lighting to the parking lot and whether or not an extra feed can be put in there for power. That was an issue before, that there was no power there. And seeing what the options are and stuff to get power there. Otherwise, we're looking at solar options. So we're actively looking at trying to get that parking lot lit and various options. On the sidewalk issue, we just met with a contractor there on the West Mendocino sidewalk that's been uplifted by the trees. We met with the contractor that the property owner has engaged right now. A letter had been sent out previously putting them on notice that the work had to be completed, that it had gone long enough through potential sales. And so they've engaged a contractor. We were negotiating with them. They were talking about sidewalk widths. We're trying to keep it a six-foot sidewalk width, like the additional spaces around it. And they were trying to negotiate whether they could keep some of the trees. But unfortunately, the trees have gotten to a stage where they are doing damage to newer areas of sidewalk and are unsafe. And we've recommended that all of them be removed and new trees planted. They're looking at fast-tracking that and hopefully if the numbers come in from the contractor well, they want to try to get that done within the next couple of months. So we might see some really amazing movement that we haven't had in years and get that whole area cleaned up soon. So that's actively being worked on right now. Yeah, everyone will be very happy about that. Yes.
It's sad to see the trees go, but happy to have, they're overdue.
Yeah.
It'd be good to have the sidewalk replaced.
It's sad. They've looked at options about doing a well around the trees and cutting the roots, but the problem is the trees are so mature, if they cut any of those major roots, the chances are the trees will die anyway. So it would be a much better option to plant proper trees in there with proper containment and just have a much better product in the long run. They'll be smaller, but they'll grow into themselves there and be better managed and maintained. So.
Walter, I know that you were looking at that area there. I didn't know that in the past, we've had a couple of other citizens ask about lighting on their street. Have we looked at some of those other streets?
We have been. I've been going around to all the other streets in the area. We've been mapping out areas that have poor lighting. One of the things I'm also working with PG&E, we're working on this project first, but we're engaged with them to look at a more comprehensive plan. The street lights are typically owned by PG&E. And so we have a service contract with them and stuff. Some of them are other, they're development lights. PG&E services them. They're going to, they're offered to do a study and look at the lights with us and stuff and see if there's areas they can improve the lighting and put new lighting in there. And then we have other areas within our plan with community development looking at solar lights too for some areas and improvement. So yes, we're looking at citywide how we can make improvements. And I have had input from the public, people calling in saying, you know, they have marginal lighting in their areas and we're taking that account, looking at it in the evenings and sort of assessing what areas are problematic. Yes. So that, it's very active looking at this now. Yeah.
Anything on utilities beyond what you've already covered?
No, I think we're pretty well covered. Yeah.
Okay. All right, city council announcements, communications and reports. I'll start with Councilmember Connie.
Thank you. Where are my notes? Let's see. Hold on, hold on. Okay, last week I attended the Finance Committee meeting, the Measure K Committee meeting, and then our Transportation Committee meeting was canceled. Finance went well. We heard from Manny that our audits were moving forward. So we're still waiting for '21-22 and '22-23. '21-22 is the one he mentioned tonight, that auditors will be here in person next week and hopefully that'll be wrapped up by the end of April.
By the end of April, yes.
And then they're moving forward with '22-23, hopefully to be done by the end of June, in which case we'll be complete and up to date with our audits by the end of the fiscal year. So very happy with the movement on that and the Finance Committee went smoothly. Measure K was the next day with our three community members who sit on the Oversight Committee. They were also pleased to hear that information. We did look at sales tax information that Manny brought forward. And I think the consensus was that once we have our sort of fiscal house fully in order and our, you know, Ts crossed and Is dotted, then we can really start getting serious about allocating the Measure K funds for projects that will help improve. K funds for projects that will help improve facilities and deferred maintenance here in the city. So that was quite exciting. The other item that I attended last week was the swearing-in of our new CSO, Mr. Dendi, and the medal ceremony for four of our police officers who were given special commendation for lifesaving actions. It was a moving ceremony. We had almost a full house here in city chambers with family members. The mayor and I were here. It was, it was a really good night for our town, and to be able to recognize our officers for their extraordinary actions was, was quite good. And then finally, I met today with city manager to discuss the ARPA funds that are available. I don't know if the public remembers this, but the city was granted just over $1 million of ARPA funding from the American Recovery Act. I can't remember what the acronym stands for, but essentially, it was money for communities to help us weather the financial downturns and difficulties that the pandemic brought forward, especially to municipalities. And so staff has put together a list of potential items that the city can spend ARPA funding on, and all five council members are giving their input to the city manager so we can winnow it down. Right now, we have about $5 million of projects identified with only $1 million to spend, so clearly some hard choices, but I gave Brian an earful. And two of the things that I identified as very important were street lighting for that parking lot that has been in such discussion tonight, as well as finishing up our urban forestry management plan, and that is creating an ordinance, a tree ordinance, and hopefully the hiring of an arborist, forester, to help make recommendations to city staff moving forward. There were lots of other things, of course, but those were, those were a couple that I was really excited about. So that's, I thought there was one other thing I wanted to tell you about. MCAG meets next week, and, oh, I wanted to call out Walter, who actually came to me at the bookstore last week to talk about trees. I had expressed some concern about some pruning that happened, and he went out of his way to come talk to me and tell me about the things they have going on in Public Works, and to invite me to tour the trees of the city with him, so that he could give me a breakdown of what they have planned. And I just, I'm, I think you're doing a great job. I'm so appreciative of how responsive you are, and I'm really happy to have you as part of the city team. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Strong.
Thank you. Sonoma Clean Power will be meeting first Thursday of March, 9:00 in the morning, and I'll probably be attending from, from here at City Hall in case anyone wants to get more in-depth about Sonoma Clean Power. I, we do not have any upcoming meetings of either EDFC or, oh, MSW. We were supposed to have a meeting of the Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority, basically deals with hazardous waste in our county. It was supposed to be a March meeting. There was apparently difficulty getting a quorum, and then they tried for something in April, and now they're trying for something in May. And I, and perhaps other board members are saying, it was really important that we move ahead with this, because we had asked for information at last meeting. We figured, you know, a month to six weeks would be enough for getting that information to really analyze how we're doing. And now, the meeting that they just proposed in May is one that I probably can't attend. So I'm frustrated that we are not really meeting regularly and getting kind of information out to the board, but also to the public about how hazardous wastes are being managed in, in our county. We do have a hazardous mobile event April 4th and 5th, I believe, it is, in Willets. That's available on the Mendocino Recycle website, and those have been very successful, and people can bring out all their hazardous waste at that time, so that's important.
Thank you.
I have LAFCO on Monday, and then we canceled our water, wastewater meeting from last week. Had some folk couldn't make it, so that got kicked till next month here, so hopefully we'll get some updates then. And then, let's see, on last Thursday, I went down to the PUC meeting they had down at the Fort Soups, and regarding AT&amp;T wanting to abandon landlines. And I spoke up against it. I did tell them I was vice mayor, but I was there as an individual since we hadn't voted. I think they're used to that with politicians, so they kind of laughed and said, yeah, they got it. And there were a lot of people speaking there, there were a lot of people, I went to the second session because I had something going further in the day, and I think there's a big concern, the sheriff spoke at that time, that this county is still, the infrastructure isn't in place. I guess how it works is if they abandon the, I'm trying to think of the word they have, but that basically carry our last resort, if they abandon it, basically, just because you can get Xfinity or something else, you're, you're gone. They don't necessarily have to provide you the ability for a phone line, and you might have a bad service area. And if you do want it at that point, you're going to have to pay to basically run the line completely. The cost will go up, if that's the case, so if you, and that has to do with landlines. So they were arguing that if that happened, that it would still be a while, and they're still rolling it out. I think there's a big concern. There were people there from Dixon, because this was a regional meeting. There were people there from Humboldt County and Butte County that showed up. And apparently, there was a line of folks that wanted to speak, but I don't think they wanted to hang around Ukiah, so they, they left. So again, I just basically said they need to keep looking at that, because I don't think we have the infrastructure in place. I think they were pushing fiber, but they're not necessarily offering to provide fiber. So even though we may have a fiber line that runs down the middle of town or this area, that, it's not like AT&amp;T is promising to provide you fiber. I tried to kind of pin one of the guys out, and, well, that's not the focus of this meeting. I'm like, well, I'm kind of curious, you know, what happens if, you know, I'd love to have fiber phone if I could get it. Is that an option? And I don't think they were prepared to do that. So I think there's going to be more, more of these meetings. And they, PUC was real quick to say nothing was going to be decided at that meeting. It was just an opportunity for the public input to be, to be taken by the commission. So I think both Madge and I showed up at the, it was a meeting at the, a presentation at the Methodist Church on Sunday regarding Helen Felandis, is that my pronouncing her name right?
Yes.
She's, she's one of the group trying to push, to do something with homeless in the area. I think she did a presentation. There were some, I think I have a couple providers in the area that do things. I know that when I was approached by community members, I told them, I said, I don't think the city should be running it. I don't think we're in the business of running homeless shelters. I think that we can provide some guidance through staff or whatever when the time comes, but not necessarily running it. And you need to go out and talk to the folks that are already doing this work so that you get an idea as to what you're looking at. I think that it's one thing to wish for something, but talking to the folks that are actually providing the services might open your eyes as to what it's going to take. I think the county's really pushing that there's money out there for nonprofits to get on this. I really think it's the county's focus that they need to be, they need to be driving this, but I think at this point, there, I think there's a, they're waving money out there, and I, I just want the folks that are behind this to really think long and hard as to what it's going to take. I'm not discouraging it by any means. I think that they're, they're out there doing God's work, trying to look at this, and I think that's important. But I think that, that, having that private partnership out there is, is the way to go. I think that's the formula that's been run in other communities, and they qualify for a lot of grants that way, so.
I guess my mic was already on.
Mine wasn't, sorry.
I just wanted to add, to that, it was, yes, there, there is also a pretty active committee, or they're calling it a team, of people that are looking at what it would take and what kinds of warming shelter or other services are really most needed. And unfortunately, they meet on second and fourth Wednesdays at 6:00, but they, they do meet at the Methodist Church. And there's been up to 18 people, includes a lot of the church leaders in our community, so they, and, and other, you know, very important people who would be on board to help get that kind of support. And they're also looking at warming shelters that exist in Fort Bragg and somewhere in Lake County, I think it is. So they're, you know, how do they, how do they do it? How do they accomplish it? How can we do something useful here in our community? Because there are at least 150 homeless people in Willets, the Willets area.
Willets area, because I think I tried to pin them down because they did a point in time count.
Not just in the city limits, but, and, and we, you know, we don't want to leave them behind. It's really especially hard in the litter, but it's, it's hard all year long if you don't have a shelter that's safe. So I appreciate that that citizens group is really trying to do that, and I agree with, it's not something that, that, I'm sorry, Jerry, that it's not something the city is going to provide, but maybe we can help facilitate, you know, where could it be? How can we qualify for funding? How can those citizen groups do it? Thank you.
All right, thank you. The last two weeks has been unusually very busy. We had finance committee, as Greta had stated before, just want to reiterate that very happy to see some significant movement on the audits. Measure K, I, one of the takeaways that I had was the support that I felt from the Measure K committee that as we see the budget, or I'm sorry, as we see the audits come in, that there's a continued commitment and support for deferred maintenance and for the police department, as was stated in the Measure K as it went out to the, to the voters. So it was just good to hear that the commitment of the committee is still there to stay focused. Senior Center had their chili cook-off. Vice Mayor and I were both there, and it was our pleasure to help support Senior Center because we know they do good in our community. The museum hosted an event on Sunday. I was glad that others were able to attend the other event. I went to the museum on Sunday, and it was very well-attended, not just with Willets residents, but throughout the county. There were many people that were there. It was a lovely presentation about Mendocino County, and what was really unique about it is, Willets was the focal point of the historical presentation that she gave, you know, back from when the Native Americans were here, and what the Little Lake Valley looked like, and how we were important, we were the, we were the center of the county. And then when the logging industry came along, again, we were the center and just, you know, how things, how things have evolved in time. And of course, we're still the center. We're the heart of Mendocino County. Anyway, it was, it was a really nice presentation, and it was also a way of getting people to sign up to be friends at the museum, so. MTA met today, had a long meeting in Ukiah before I came here. The bulk of the conversation was about an acceptance of a Ukiah Transit Center feasibility study. There's been lots of community input and debate about where the transit center should be. There were nine, nine locations that were identified in the feasibility study, but as we reiterated to everybody today, we were just accepting the feasibility, the possibility of there being a transit center. We didn't necessarily need to pick one of the nine locations. The city of Ukiah, rightfully so, just as if we would be if something was coming in our, in our area, they want local control of where the transit center is. So we agreed to form a technical committee, and I'll serve on that committee that will, as a member of MTA, that will meet with the city of Willets to work out the technical pros and cons of the nine sites that were identified, and the two sites that seem to be, in general, most favorable, either the highest recommendation from the, the individuals, presenters, LSC. They identified that the location just north of Coles, that property, that, there's five parcels there, but the, the two parcels that are closest to Coles was the preferred site from this company who did the study. However, the city of Ukiah's preferred site, as we know, it is next to where the new courthouse will be built. And there are pros and cons of those, so we'll be looking at, there'll be lots of meetings to discuss the merits of which, which one is best, and not just for the, not just for the riders, but for the city of Ukiah, for commerce, for the future going forward. So that's a, that's kind of a big project that we're working on. And then MCAG also let us know that it's rare for the state transit agency to come out in our area. I guess they only meet twice a year, and this year, one of their visits is going to be in Fort Bragg next week. And I asked, what, what are we trying to, what message are we trying to send to the state that we're concerned about? And the, one of the main concerns is that there is a zero emission policy, but how are we going to realistically meet that as a transit agency in such a rural area? We're running into, we're buying electric buses, and then we're already running into problems. For example, MTA has two buses here in Willets that are zero emissions. That company already folded. So the warranty we had on those two buses, which we spent a lot of money on, now it's, we have no warranty, and if they break down, there's no parts. So we're making all this tax investment in, in zero emissions vehicles, but is that the best use of the taxpayers' money when technology isn't catching up as fast as the goal? And so there's a, there's a lag there, and there aren't that many companies that make and provide large vehicles for public transportation. So it's becoming very difficult for us as a planning in the agency to figure out how we're going, how we're going to meet the goal. So we're struggling there. So this is our opportunity to talk to the state and let them know our challenges, so it's kind of a big deal. Yeah, I'm sure MCAG will be talking about that opportunity as well. Let's see, just a reminder that we have the League of Cities event, yes, on March 8th.
Another big deal.
Yeah, another big deal, and I hope that we're all, are we all going to make it? Is everybody going to have the opportunity to come for at least a portion of it? A portion of it.
I know Sarah sent out a reminder to the folks there, but I'm not sure if you guys got reminders.
Yeah, we got one.
You did. Yeah.
RSVPs are due by Friday.
Yes, I RSVP'd already, yes.
And I just remembered, I haven't done my Form 700, so if any of you haven't...
Mine's done.
We got to do that, Madge.
Did you do yours?
April something, yeah.
All right, well, then that brought me to my next item, which is, it quickly is approaching that time of elections where we're going to need people to step up and decide if they want to run for Willet City Council for the next November election. The packets will be ready, is it in June that they typically are ready?
I believe it's June. The packets will be ready in July.
July.
July. Well, I'll start getting them together probably well before then.
Okay, so we're quickly, it's just a couple months away, so just making sure that we're going to be putting out something as a city of Willets stating, here's the process for, you know, should you choose to, to look into this.
Speaking of elections, just a reminder that March 5th is right around the corner, and there's a nice little drop box out here if anyone wants to get their ballot directly to the Elections Department. This is the way to do it, but don't...
The right one is out now.
Yes.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
The corrected ballots have been mailed.
And don't forget to do it before we're on March 5th.
And I, and I was wondering, how am I going to know when it comes in the mail that it's the corrected one? I was worried that I would get confused, and I was very pleased that when it came, it had an attachment on top of it, and big bold letters says this is the corrected ballot. So that, that was helpful. So that, that was helpful. My last item is just to counsel, to let you know that next meeting, we will be meeting at 6:00 PM for a 30-minute closed session item. And then we'll come to council, and then afterwards, we'll reconvene to closed session again. So just giving you a heads up on that.
Is it 13?
Yes.
Yes. And then, let's see, I believe good in welfare. Does anybody have any, we covered quite a bit, but anything additional? Nope. All right, there's no...
Just welfare. Everybody be safe this weekend. Supposed to be a huge storm. If you don't have to travel on Saturday, please don't.
There might be snow, they said, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm nervous, because I am headed to the airport Saturday morning, but there's nothing that can be done about it. Yeah. All right. With that, I will adjourn at 9:13.